Okay, I call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, August 6, 2024. Thanks, everybody, for coming. And if you would, let's rise for the pledge allegiance. And I think Taylor Williams will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Good gracious God, we thank you for giving us life and breath in a community that we can call home. We thank you for people who've lived in this place for decades and for those who are just moving in. We pray that you would help us too. So work together for common good and flourishing of all. We thank you for the opportunities and challenges that Live with Force as a community. We pray your wisdom and discernment on our town leaders and commissioners, that they would make decisions that are wise and help us to be good neighbors to one another. We pray for those in the path of the tropical storm hurricane that's moving our way. Pray for safety, and specifically, safety for those who will be responding and out helping others in the middle of it all. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming out. Thank you. Okay, before we get started, as you notice, we got two commissioners missing. Lynn Woodlong had scheduled to be out of town for several weeks now, and we knew he wasn't going to be here. But then Paul Vilga had some type of personal issue, family issue today, and he's not here either. So we do have enough for quorum, so we're going to have the meeting. So thanks, everybody, for coming. I know it could get bad weather, so just be careful this week as we work through the bad weathers coming. All right, with that, the first thing we got is a couple of proclamations. The first one is National Senior Citizens Day. I think Commissioner, you want to lead us on that one?
Be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Proclamation proclaiming August 21, 2024 as National Senior Citizens Day. Whereas on August 21, 1988, then-President Ronald Reagan proclaimed the day National Senior Citizens Day with proclamation number 5847 stating, and I quote, "For all they have achieved throughout the life and for all they continue to accomplish, we owe older citizens our thanks in a heartfelt salute. We can best demonstrate our gratitude and esteem by making sure that our communities are good places in which to mature and grow older, places in which older people can participate to the fullest and can find the encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services they need to continue to lead lives of independence and dignity. And whereas many traditions exist when it comes to senior citizens, as many of our traditions growing up were set by them. And whereas in 2020, the number of people aged 60 and above outnumbered children younger than five years. And whereas by year 2050, the increase in population of 60-plus-year-olds will be 22%. And whereas 3.6% of people over 65 years old are in nursing homes. And whereas four in five older adults will battle at least one chronic illness. And whereas 50% of elderly people battle at least two chronic diseases. And whereas one in three elderly people do not get any physical activity at age 75 and above. And whereas over one-third of federally subsidized housing is occupied by elderly people. And whereas senior citizens are the fastest-growing demographic on the social platform Facebook. And whereas elderly, family, and friends have a lifetime's worth of experiences and stories and are an invaluable resource for wisdom, knowledge, and advice. And whereas senior citizens make more charitable donations than any other age group, volunteer their time, and look out for their loved ones. Now therefore, be it resolved that Ronnie Curran, mayor, does hereby proclaim the 21st day of August 2024 as National Senior Citizens Day in Roseville. And from this day and beyond, we call upon all Roseville citizens to celebrate older adults for their contributions, support their independence, and recognize their unparalleled value to our community. Adopted August 6, 2024."
Thank you. Appreciate it, Commissioner Paul. And you got a report we're going to give a little bit later.
I do, yes.
So we'll kind of circle back to that a little bit. We do have another proclamation. Well, we was looking for a guest to be here, and she hadn't got here yet. So we're going to do that one, move it down in the agenda and do that one a little bit later. The next item is consideration approval of the agenda. And I'm open for a motion if anybody got one for that.
Move.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second. Motion, second. Anyhow, discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, boy. Appreciate that. No nays on that. Consideration approval to consent agenda. As you can see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six items, minutes, and some other considerations on there. Naturally, any commissioner want to pull one, we will discuss it and vote on it separately if you would like to. If not, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Anyhow, discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposes. So thank you. Appreciate that. Public to be heard. Is there any sign up there? No sign ups? Anybody want to speak? I mean, I'll open it up. Anybody want to speak? This is your opportunity. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, public. Thank y'all for coming. Quite a few showed up in the rain tonight, so thank y'all for that. Appreciate you coming out. Town Board lays on reports. The first one is veterans. Dan?
Yes, sir.
You got a report for us tonight?
Good evening, town, board, Mayor Curran. August 6, 2024, veterans report. August military anniversaries and observances that's going on. Coast Guard birthday is celebrating their birthday on August 4. Purple Heart Day is August 7, on tomorrow, and the Marine Forces Reserve Birthday is on August 29. On August 3, 2024, the Wake Forest Purple Heart Foundation hosted its 15th Purple Heart banquet at Richland Creek. My wife and I had the honor of attending as a guest of a Vietnam veteran by the name of Jack Gorlefsky. Patty Elliott, and she is the national president of the American Gold Star Mothers, was their keynote speaker. The disabled American veteran hosted a meet and greet with veterans, actually this two Saturdays ago, and some of the leadership from the Durham VA, Congresswoman Ross's office, and our very own the Joel Fund, were their speakers. The rest of my report can be found on our town website under Resources, because I want to use this time to introduce an organization that recently started and has been doing excellent work across Durham areas as well as ours. And Ashley, he has some great news that I saw that I would definitely want them to tell about what they're being called to do. So the name of their organization is called Boots on the Ground LLC. So at this time, I would like for us to focus and introduce the founder and CEO of Boots on the Ground LLC, software class retired Waddell Kemp and Tiffany Kemp. Can y'all please come forward?
Hello, commissioners. Thank you. Hello, town manager. Thank you, commissioners, for giving this opportunity. My name is Waddell Kemp, and this is my wife Tiffany Kemp. And we're with Boots on the Ground Catering LLC. And Boots on the Ground Catering, we're not like any other company, because we actually do military. So we're able to get within the units, right, and build camaraderie and teach other people that's in the community, bring them into that environment to let them see what it looks like. I did 27 years in Army. I deployed with the Commissioner on several occasions. And we're also working on music therapy for veterans. And I think that's much needed. When I was overseas in Iraq and Afghanistan, the music is really what helped the troops get through those hard times. And even myself, I had cancer a year ago, and thank God and my wife, with the music and prayer, I beat cancer. And yeah, so Tiffany, you want to talk?
You had it, babe. No, we're a small company. We started last year, like he said, after his cancer diagnosis and recovery from that. I said, I'm going back to work. He said, no, you're not. I said, we're going to start the business that I wanted to do since 2017. And here we are today. We just got activated.
By whom?
The governor and the-
Emergency management system.
Y'all see the weather.
All right.
So as soon as I leave here, I got to go start preparing to serve meals as of tomorrow due to the inclement weather that's coming in. We don't know how long that's going to be. We are still play by ear right now. I'm on the hook for three days. I'm in Butler right now, currently servicing some units down there. That's what we're into. And we're trying to have boots on the ground and a little bit of everything. I got an email on the way here from Wake County Public Schools. They have a career day coming up and want us to be a part of that. So we're trying to get off into a lot of other things, the music therapy, not just the food. I also want to try and link with the schools as it relates to trade.
Yes, bringing back the trade.
Bringing back culinary arts, and some of the students may be from the culinary arts program at the high schools or even at the colleges, to see if we can work them into Boots on the Ground Catering as a startup.
Which you would definitely love, the fact that for next school season in August, the RT, well, correction, the Navy National Defense Cadet Corps will be in Roseville High. So that's another great opportunity for you guys to partner with them, as well as they'll be partnering with the Joel Fund. So a lot of good things has come into town. And thank y'all for being a part of that.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for having us. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you much. Like I said, Commissioner Long is not here. We don't really have a public safety report from him. Chief, is anything we need to report?
Right now, the front line is the weather. Everybody just stay safe. We're going to continue to monitor the storm over the next couple of days, and we'll be alerting citizens to heat allergies or flooding in our area. So pay attention to social media.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that, Chief. Commissioner Paul, again, senior citizen update. You have an update for us?
I do. Thank you. So I'm happy to announce, we now have a senior community page on the town website. There you'll find information on upcoming events, items of interest, and educational pieces. I want to thank our new communications and engagement specialist, Candace Scarberry, for making this page a reality. She was great. We're finalizing a survey to request input from our residents on the livability of our town. The survey will encompass issues affecting our entire community, not just seniors. I hope to get this survey out to our residents later this month. The senior network has a full calendar this month, including educational, social, and entertainment events. In particular, they are hosting a charity golf tournament at Heritage Golf Course on Thursday, September 12. We're raising money to buy them a passenger van. As you may know, they give free rides to our immobile seniors. They did over 600 trips last year alone, and they use their own vehicle. So we're trying to buy them a passenger van. Our own Parks and Rec continues to host more and more events for our senior community. Please visit the town website at rosevillnc.gov/parksrecreation/specialevents for that information. As we heard moments ago, August 21 is National Senior Citizens Day. I want to reiterate a few points mentioned in the proclamation. Today, over 17% of Americans are seniors. By 2030, it's estimated over 71 million Americans will be over 65 years old. Today, over one-third of federally subsidized housing is occupied by seniors. So now, more than ever, we need to find a solution to the problem of affordable senior housing. Finally, seniors make more charitable contributions than any other age group. They are a wealth of information, experience, and an invaluable source of wisdom. So please reach out to a senior you know and let them know how much they mean to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, Commissioner Snead, planning board, any report?
All right. We had our planning board meeting on July 22. And at that meeting, we had a swearing-in ceremony for Frank Pierce, who replaced Steve Hill, who I believe moved away. And so Frank is going to serve out the remainder of Steve's term. And this will, with Frank sitting in his position, as he was on another board before, he will be approaching 50 years of service for the town of Roseville. So that's a big accomplishment there, a milestone for him. On our agenda, we discussed a couple of developments, one which we will speak about tonight, 0 South Main Street, that's on our agenda for tonight. Another one we had spoken about was 200 School Street and the Scarborough Apartments. And that, I see, is tentatively on the agenda for September 3. So that'll be coming to us in a couple months. After that, our planning director, Meredith, gave a report on the aged housing and LDO text amendment, which we will be discussing tonight. She'll be presenting that to us tonight. So that's some good information for us to hear. And our town attorney's report, she reported that they're still working on the bylaws and plans and procedures for our planning board. They're close to having that revised edition ready for us to review. And that was our meeting. Good stuff coming forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And with Paul Vilga not being here, he did tell me he didn't have a report, per se. He'll give it next month. And he was called away this morning for some personal thing. But I would like to take this opportunity to thank June Green and the Parks and Recreation Department, Eric Marsh, and the Public Works Department. I mean, the work y'all put in the last few weeks for this George Taylor event coming up, supposed to be Saturday, Friday, and Saturday. Tremendous. So thank y'all for that. I want to, both of y'all, thank y'all departments for that. I mean, we can't help a hurricane, or, you know, tropical storm is coming. But I think they're going to have to reschedule it for September. So let's make sure we kind of work through a date to make that work. But do appreciate that. Thank y'all for that. I know Parks and Rec had a big piece in it. So thank you for, it was all ready to go. And then, you know, rain's coming in. But thanks a lot on that. But the other thing, I think we can go to communications, town staff. I believe planning department is going to do an update. So Meredith, you have an update you want to do?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mayor Curran and commissioners. So I'm sure you saw the news release or the communication from the town of Roseville that the planning department is moving or has moved.
Oh, that's right. I'm glad you said that, Meredith.
Yes. Today was the first day I worked in my new office. And you can check out a picture of it on the top right corner of this slide. I promised there will be artwork on the walls tomorrow. Had to work on my town board presentation today, so didn't have time to hang artwork. Mike and Michelle's space is on the left. They do have some boxes to unpack. And we're looking forward to adding Town of Roseville Planning Department to the sign where it says 211 South Main Street.
Very nice.
So besides unpacking boxes and getting ready for tonight, the planning department team is working on quite a few development review applications listed in the top box are what we have going on. If you notice, the construction and infrastructure drawings, final subdivision plaits, and site development plans, also preliminary subdivision plaits, those numbers are higher than they have been in the past months, and our rezoning cases are a little lower. So we have quite a few things going on that will be seen under construction in the near future. In addition to development review, you know, our team is kicking off the comprehensive plan update. We do have our internal staff kickoff Thursday this week, and we hope to bring to you at your September or October work session, the kickoff for you all to give your input on getting that project started in the right direction. The Affordable Housing Plan, you know, is going on, and we hope to have a draft of that very soon. Our staff team has a meeting with a consultant coming up to discuss some draft implementation items that we'll bring to you for review. So I'm excited about that. And then, of course, wanted to remind everyone that the planning department manages, of course, the planning board, as well as the board of adjustment. So tomorrow, I'll get back to more work, catching up on emails and hanging a few pictures. And please stop by the office sometime so you can check out our new space. We're very excited to have it.
Nice.
Any questions?
Exciting. Excited for you all to have the space.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Meredith. We're also going to get an update from Community Economic Development Director, Michael McFarlane. You have an update for us, too?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to touch on a couple of things tonight. My report, just kind of a reiteration of, you know, how partnerships are always important in economic development and relationships. Thought I'd just mention three of our partners in this arena. One of our major regional partners is Wake County Economic Development, of course. They're an arm of Wake County and the Raleigh Chamber, and they assist us with marketing the region. And when larger corporations are kind of looking to the area, and to help attract larger businesses to the area more locally. Our partnership with the Roseville Chamber of Commerce is focused on supporting existing businesses and entrepreneurs here in town. The Chamber is going to be providing an update to the town board on their activities and upcoming events here at the next work session on August 20. So stay tuned for that in a couple of weeks. And then, the RDDA, the Downtown Development Association, is sort of our newest partner, a recently established 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization focusing on economic growth, appearance, and design. They're going to work a little bit with the planning department in that regard, and then marketing as well. So, and specifically focused more on downtown and Roseville's Main Street. And this group will also be providing a report to the board at the October 22 work session. So we'll get to hear from both of them later in the year. As previously mentioned, Meredith kind of hit upon the comprehensive plan update. So I'll be involved in that as well as we're going to update our economic development strategic plan. And rather than that be a separate document this time around, we're going to work that in so that it's kind of one document altogether. And interestingly, the same consultant that did our plan in the past, Rosen Associates, was also chosen as a subconsultant by our main consultant, Withers Ravanell, to do the comp plan. So she'll be back and working with us on that. So just wanted to remind everyone of that. Kind of switching gears on the communications front, as Commissioner Paul mentioned, we hired Candace Scarberry. She's been with us now for about a month, and she's getting settled in and already helped with the senior page. You'll see today, a lot of communications going out about the weather and things like that, and getting prepared for Tropical Storm Debbie. that and getting prepared for Tropical Storm Debbie. She was a, she worked at WRAL for a bit and then was also Press Assistant at the Department of Health and Human Services. So we're glad to have her and, you know, as we continue to build upon our efforts to have an interactive and informative online presence for the community. So we're glad to have her. Lastly, tonight, we had discussed reserving this, the six and a half acres here of land behind Town Hall that the town owns for affordable housing. As we've been talking about affordable housing and have engaged with the Affordable Housing Consultant to do our plan, this land kept coming up as a possible location for that. And because we've received already at least two inquiries from two different parties that are interested in building affordable housing on this property, I think if we want to start to get serious about having this land be developed for either affordable and/or senior housing, staff kind of felt it best that we put out a request for proposals to solicit project ideas. This will kind of give us the opportunity to let the senior and affordable housing world know that, you know, what, you know, what our intentions are for the property and kind of give the town an opportunity to evaluate projects for development that best fit our goals for what we want to see there. So we do have an Affordable Housing Committee that's assisting with the plan, and this committee can also assist with this RFP process as well. We're just starting this. I think there'll be a time at some point for the Board to weigh in on what that looks like because we'll want to set the vision. For instance, is it, do we want it to be senior housing? Do we want it to be affordable senior housing? Do we want a mixed-use component of that where maybe there is some retail or a coffee shop or something as part of that or not? So we're just starting that discussion, but we're going to start to draft up a RFP to look at later and then eventually post that for us to solicit organizations that do this. So, and that's kind of the gist of my report. Were there any questions on that or anything I mentioned tonight?
Great addition about the senior affordability. That's very important as we try to tackle all aspects of affordability, you know, across North Carolina, but focusing, of course, on Roseville. No, this is a good initiative. So thank you for starting that.
Yes.
So I do have a question about that land. So has a feasibility study been done on that land to see how feasible it is, even with the amount of rock that's under that ground?
Right. We have not commissioned anything formal in that regard. I've kind of heard anecdotally that maybe about three to four acres might be suitable for development. And then some of those acres in the back where the topography is kind of rough and there's some rock back there, that's something we could maybe offer or maybe it's something in the RFP, we say, well, somebody's going to, those companies are going to have to analyze that themselves and decide whether it's worth developing. So, but yeah, I think we do have some historical documents from when that was part of the Barrington neighborhood. So I think there's a soil assessment of that area, but it's probably five to 10 years old right now.
I don't think the granite's moved.
Yeah, right. So, yep.
Somebody mined it.
Yeah, right. At midnight.
Right.
Michael, do we have a timeline on when we can see a draft of the RFP?
No, I don't know. I don't know. I defer to Town Manager and if you had any thoughts on that.
So Michael has drafted one. He sent one over for us to look at, sent one over for myself and Dave to look at. But we felt led to come back to you all and ask about it before we started getting too deep down the rabbit hole. Also, just wanted to give you all an opportunity to shoot an email over of the certain specific qualities or things you're looking for in the proposals. And so they'll help add some more context to it. We know it's senior living, but if there's any other attributes that you would like to see in that, please let us know, and we'll add that into it. And then we'll look to kind of craft it and shape it and put it out to see. The good thing about it is that people are always looking for opportunities. And so with something that we don't see what we want, we can update and change it and re-imput it back out there again. It doesn't cost us anything to shop it out, shop around for it. So, but that's one of the main things we did. We do have a draft. I think it's at about 85% completion. And so we're just looking for your feedback and see if there's anything else you would like to add before we put it out onto the respective websites for submittals.
I do have a question. So is three to four acres typically what you're looking for?
I think it depends on the developer and the organization. I mean, it depends on the type of, you know, and this is where we can kind of set the vision for that. Would we like to see cottage homes? Would we like to see a multi-story apartment-type building that goes, you know, three, four stories high? Is it one building? Is it three buildings? Those are things, and again, the developers that do this will look at that land, too, and see how they can kind of fit what they envisioned for that land as well. So.
Something to think about, and to think outside the box, but to actually get our senior community involved, to actually have like an open house.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because I'm pretty sure others know about different land that could be for sale, that we could actually, that makes sense for this type of project.
So, yeah. Unfortunately, this is the one, the only one that we own, so we have control of. But yeah, it's a good point.
Got a question, sir. Is that good? Any more questions for Michael?
No. Thank you, Michael.
Good job, Michael. I'm glad we got Candace on board. I know that's a big help to us.
Yeah.
Communications is very important. And I got to meet her a couple of weeks ago. And she does, she has extensive background with WRAL, producing programs and all kinds of stuff. So I think she's going to really do a good job with us. That's a nice, nice hire you had there. So good, thank you for that.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay.
All righty.
I think we will jump right into our public hearings now. We've got two legislative hearings. The first one is Legislative Hearing ANX 24-03 and rezoning REZ 24-03 for voluntary annexation petition and rezoning map amendment for PEN 1758479244.
Thank you for saying that so I didn't have to.
That's right.
So yes, that is what is.
Didn't have an address, and I guess there's no address.
Unaddressed, yes. So, but rezoning annexation for an unaddressed property with the pen number you just said, Mayor Curran. So the subject property is located on South Main Street, next to where the Mineki Garage is, Livingstone Church, and Suburban Propane. So I'm sure you know where that is. And here is a picture of the front of the property. The applicant or the owner of the property is Grand Park Properties, and the applicant is SHJ Development. And so the applicant is requesting to change the zoning from general industrial to general commercial as a conditional zoning district. The one condition that is included prohibits the uses on this slide, schools, K through 12, bars and nightclubs, gas station, rental and sales of vehicles, minor service vehicles, funeral home, tattoo establishment, water storage tower, and telecommunications tower. So as per the comprehensive plan, future land use map, the subject property has a future land use designation of industrial. And that is not consistent with the request for general commercial, however. We have some additional information about that. So again, not consistent, but it's not a bad red X. It's actually a star because red, think commercial. And the Planning Board did recommend approval six to zero. There was one absence, and no one spoke about the case. So going back to the red star and not a red X, the Main Street Vision Plan endorses commercial, retail, and service-type uses along Main Street. So that fits our town's vision of what we want to happen on our Main Street. The corner lot facilitates many desired non-residential uses permitted in the general commercial district as conditioned by the applicant. And the property will create synergy with the new Wallbrook development and other uses along Main Street having that general commercial zoning. So staff does recommend approval of their rezoning request. And I'm sure you will call up people for the legislative hearing, and we can come back to the motions.
Okay. Before you step back, thank you for the introduction on there, Meredith. Any questions for Meredith?
Just one, sir. Meredith, could you go back to the slide that had what is prohibited there?
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to see, was vape shops on there as well?
I have that on my list, too.
No, vape and tobacco store is not on the list, so.
We could please add that.
I was going to add that. I was going to say the same thing, but I was going to check and see if it was already a prohibited.
I think it was, but.
In that zone.
Oh, it's, I don't.
There's a distance.
Yes, there's a distance requirement. It has to be a certain distance, like 1,000 feet from a school. So it might not be allowed anyway, but that they can certainly.
Yeah, that was on my list, too.
Can certainly ask the applicant to do that. The owner is here this evening.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions for Meredith? Well, she steps back. Okay. Well, I'm going to open the public hearing officially and see if there's any comments, either way, comments from the public for or against this annexation and rezoning requests. Basically, to sum it up, I think, Meredith, for the public, years ago, all that, what in there was kind of industrial, was thinking was industrial. And then when the Main Street Vision came in five years ago, that area now is commercial and Wallbrook is going to have it, a Wallbrook affiliates and that kind of thing, right?
I think you're exactly right. I think the Main Street Vision Plan is the more updated vision for our community.
Right. And it's probably was changed in the comprehensive land use plan?
I believe the comprehensive plan land use designation was in place just because the zoning was in place. I'm not sure additional thought was put into that at the time. And, you know, with the comprehensive plan update starting now, I believe this is something we would look at anyway.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
From the public, any comments for or against? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you want to speak? Yeah, come up. How you doing, Margaret? State your name and address, please.
Margaret Watkins, 407 Bell Melon Court. I did not see a site plan. I am against rezonings without a site plan. That's just personally how I feel. I've seen too many things go wrong. I would rather see a site plan before this is approved, personally. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
My name's Phil Begani. I'm with Flat Person Associates. I actually represent George Upchurch, who's the owner of the property. He's an ex-brother-in-law of mine. On the vape store comment, I think if that was an added condition, that wouldn't be an issue. We'd be fine with that if that's an issue with anybody. I also wanted to talk, I don't, we're not here to talk about the intended use, but the intended use is allowed under the current zoning. So while we're taking this through a downzoning from its current zoning, it could be built under the current zoning as it is today, at least under the front half of the property. The back half, we have no plans for yet. Right now, we've just agreed to throw it all into the one rezoning. So hopefully, that helps a little bit.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments from the public? Not hearing any. We'll close the public hearing. Meredith, any comments on, I think, to come in with the site plan? I mean, this is a little bit different situation.
It is.
If you don't even have a site plan to go with it.
There is a site development plan currently in review for the front part of this property. As Phil just mentioned, the site plan is for a car wash, and that use would be allowed under industrial or commercial. And so this is just looking at the entire property and setting that intention for the future to be more synergistic and have the commercial use along the Main Street area.
Got you. Any questions for Meredith? Any other question? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. With that, I'll turn it over to Board for discussion or either a consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the rezoning request, REZ 2403, with the included condition of approval and the addition of the vape shop and adopt ordinance 2024-12.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? Now, hearing in all the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? So thank you very much. Yeah, I think, I think this is fair to say, probably 99% of our things we do do have a site plan with it. This is a little bit different situation, being that it's part of our Main Street. That's something that was decided, you know, in that plan that it would be. So it's a little bit, little bit different. But I think that's a good point, that typically, we would want to see a site plan when we're rezoning something 90% of the time, probably. So, thank you, Meredith.
The condition is zoning.
Don't we have to do two and three, too?
Yeah. So need a motion for the consistency statement then.
Okay. Motion to adopt the plan consistency statement and statement of reasonableness for REZ 2403.
Second.
And a motion to approve the voluntary annexation petition received under GS 160A-31 for ANX 2403 and adopt ordinance 2024-11.
Second.
Okay. So we got a motion, a second on both items two and three. Is there any other discussion? Not any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. Thank you very much. So appreciate that, Meredith. Next item is Legislative Hearing TA 2401, Land Development Ordinance, LDO amendments to the residential high development standards, off-street parking requirements, and definitions. So I'll be, you know, any introduction from staff you want to make on this one?
Definitely. And thank you for, again, reading out this title as well. So we received an application from American Engineering on behalf of Michael Fleming of BRD Land Investment, that is the developer for the Merit property. And the applicant is requesting a text amendment to allow age-restricted development options of 4,000-square-foot lots for single-family detached and 1,900-square-foot lots for single-family attached development. And the applicant's also asking for a text amendment that would state, no guest parking would be required for age-restricted, single-family attached development. So with text amendments, the new text is shown in bold blue, underlined. So this is Table 3.1.3, Residential High Development Standards. Again, the new text is shown in blue. So with the density for residential high development, the maximum is six units per acre for single-family detached. So with age-restricted development, the proposal is to change that to a maximum density of eight units per acre for single-family detached residential. Also, for single-family detached, age-restricted development, the setbacks are consistent with residential high already. And then with the age-restricted attached, single-family development, there is a slight difference, five feet setback with end units, a minimum of 16 feet between structures, and then a minimum of 10 feet between two-unit town home or attached residential structures. So it's reduced setbacks, slightly higher density, and slightly reduced setbacks for the single-family attached. And also, with lot width, the proposal is to allow a 40-foot-wide, single-family detached lot for age-restricted development. And I mentioned in the introduction, for the lot area, the proposed change is to allow a 4,000-square-foot lot for single-family age-restricted development and a 1,900-square-foot lot for age-restricted attached development. So town home lot, a little less than what's already allowed in residential high, and then the single-family detached, somewhat less than what's currently allowed in residential high development. Also, in our land development ordinance, we have a statement that no more than 15 acres may be assigned to town home development within a subdivision. So with this package, the applicant's proposing that there would be no limitation for age-restricted town homes, so that town home component could be more than 15 acres.
Did you say that again?
Right now, we have a regulation that if an applicant comes in with a neighborhood, only 15 acres of that neighborhood could be town homes. So this would remove that limitation for age-restricted developments. So an age-restricted development could have more than 15 acres of town homes in it. it with this. The next section with off-street parking requirements, wherever you see the word per added, that is a cleanup in the parking table. We think that makes more sense than having a slash. And the difference with this package of text amendments is the blue text on the right under additional notes, that no guest parking would be required for age-restricted town home or single-family attached development. Also proposed to add a definition to Section 11.7, Age-Restricted Residential Development. An age-restricted residential development is any housing type that qualifies for an exemption as housing for older persons under the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1988. We took this to the planning board a month and a half ago, and they unanimously recommended approval with a vote of five to zero. There was one absence and one vacancy that evening. And the planning board made the great suggestion of adding that definition for age-restricted housing, so of course, we did do that, we just went through that. And staff recommends approval due to the alignment with Strategic Plan Objective 3.5 that refers to having diverse housing within the town of Roseville. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, the fifteen acres and no limit on the number of town homes? So what would that look like? Help me to make sense of that in my brain.
What would that look like? That could look, technically, that could look like a full town home development. I know we've, there is a, I guess we can't count, there is a concept plan for the Merit property that shows a mix of town homes and single-family detached housing. But with this proposed change, yes, you could have an entire development of town homes.
Those single-family homes could be taken out, and they would all be town homes?
It could, with this. If there's no limitation on the town homes, that means an entire development could be town homes.
So limit on the number per acre in the zoning, it's just not a limit on how many percent?
Number of acres.
Is that, is that fair to say? I mean, you couldn't put ten thousand of them in there? It has to be within the.
Right.
Whatever our medium density or whatever.
Right, it would have to fit the lot size and the development standards.
Got it, okay.
One question about the age. You should never ask no one their age. But is there a age restriction, like fifty-five and older type of community?
Industry standards, fifty-five plus. I don't know if Attorney Neal has any legal comments on that?
Yes, so, given federal law, this is the way the private market has developed. So age discrimination, while not normally a protected class, is protected under equal housing law. So the exception to that in federal law is for age-restricted housing, and you can qualify by imposing restrictive covenants that limit fifty-five and older to an eighty-twenty distribution. So the definition for age-restricted housing that the town is proposing is one that lines up with the federal law, and it's gonna be the one that the housing market is used to see.
Yes, sir. Understood. When I saw this and now understand, what I saw was, and I could be wrong, but I was gonna think outside the box, of a community like Del Webb?
Yes.
To where this could fit.
Yes. That's the picture, that's sort of transparent in the background, it's actually the tradition's Del Webb community in Wake Forest.
Which makes me very jealous, 'cause I'm not fifty-five. And I like that community over there. But I've been thinking, this is something, like a project like that, that makes sense. Thank you, Meredith.
And the smaller lots are beneficial to seniors who don't want to take care of a big yard, who don't want to take care of a big house, so it just gives a variety within the development of multiple types of housing that a senior could select.
Sure. Absolutely.
That's cool. Any other question for murder?
Thank you.
Real quick, murder, if you don't mind, I've heard you talk about it before, but you know, you mentioned about diversity of housing in there. You got personal experience with these type communities with age-restricted and stuff that really is, you can share that.
Sure, this picture, if you can kind of make it out, this is my parents' driveway. They had a band in their garage one day, and these are all their neighbors hanging out in the driveway, and you can see some of the homes in the background. So yeah, my parents have been very happy to live there.
Sounds like pretty fun parents.
They're, they're pretty awesome.
Any other question? Thank you. At that, with that, I will open, is there any other, any other presentations wants to be done? Does an applicant want to do a presentation, anything, or would you just open the public hearing?
I think they were comfortable with staff handling it, but.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And they're welcome to speak, anybody's welcome to speak. We will, we will start off, anybody who want to speak, speak in favor, please come up. And then anybody who want to speak in opposition? Anybody sign up, first of all? No? Well, come on up, Margaret.
I actually love Del Webb. I wish I could live there, actually. But just to give you guys an idea, the average lot size in Del Webb for the single-family homes is 6,500 square feet, not 4,000. I don't know if it's, if we're shooting for a price point or something, or what the deal is, but in my opinion, I would not go any lower than 6,500. That's just my personal opinion. And the 1,900 square feet, that's, I would at least do 2,000. That's just my personal opinion, but like I said, I, I don't know what the reasoning was for that, but I love Del Webb, too, and I'd love to see you guys have one, but 4,000 square feet, that's, that's small. That's really small. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. And, and board, I will leave it to you guys. If y'all got a question for anybody, even applicant, anything, murder, just attorney, just speak up. Now, one of the things, I don't know, I don't know the numbers, maybe you can answer this. Four thousand is the minimum, it does, that's not the average, is it?
No, that would be the minimum, and that is certainly, as Ms. Watkins said, that is certainly smaller than other lots, but this would be a different housing product. And I guess one thing to consider with the smaller lot size with this coming forward for age-restricted, it's possible we could hear from the rest of the development community being interested in having the option for a smaller lot, so just something to consider.
Right. Okay, any other question for murder?
Meredith, I do. So, so do you know the average lot size for town homes in the sixty-five? You said that there were six thousand in Del Webb?
Del Webb in Wake Forest is only single-family home.
Oh, that's different, okay.
No, it is different.
So do you know the average lot size for the.
The town homes?
Town homes in age, in age-restricted.
I don't, but it's worth pointing out, the 1,900-square-foot request is a hundred square feet less than what the standard is right now, so it's really not very different. It's not, certainly not as different as going from 7,500 to 4,000.
And Meredith, aren't other towns in, in this area, they, a number of them use forty-foot lots?
Yes.
For development?
Yes, you see plenty of four thousand and five thousand.
And I would think they would be smaller than 6,500. It'd be kind of an odd-shaped lot for a forty-foot lot to be almost 200 feet long. But, so, and, and the whole purpose of that is for lower maintenance in the yard. Okay, which senior population probably benefit from. Okay.
Couldn't agree.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? All right.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I will open the board up for consideration.
Guess I'll read it. So I move to approve TA 20-24-01, LDO Amendments to Table 31.3, Residential High Development Standards, Table 6.4.3.G, Off-Street Parking Requirements and Chapter 11 Definitions, along with adoption of ordinance 2024-0-39.
Got a motion, is there a second?
I second.
All right, that was Commissioner Austin's second there. Any other discussion from board? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both.
Thank you, Meredith.
Both things approved, and I appreciate that. Good work, board. We do have a couple of business items to take care of. One is accepting of bids for the farm entry. This is something that we've been working on for a long, long time, so very excited to see Eddie and June, you know, bringing something to the board and to get us started there, so thank you. And it's all, floor is yours, Eddie, so.
Well, good evening, mayor and commissioners. I think the last time we talked about the farm was back, believe it or not, in January. So it's been, I actually thought it was what, you know, it wasn't that long ago, but it was about six, seven months ago. But tonight, just wanted to quick run through, we've got a lot of good news. We, of course, are beginning the process of building a road into the park so that we can start to develop the park. This road is going to be not only to, of course, allow construction to continue and for us to fully develop the park, but also to be able to provide access to the public, to be able to use the park. So I know, like you had mentioned, we have been working on this for a very long time, and we're finally, we're finally ready to start. So the project was advertiser bid on June 6th, with the bid opening of July 23rd. We actually had seven companies submit a bid on that date, and those are listed right there. The lowest bid was Cardinal Civil Contracting, and they were the ones who just did the work with Rogers Road and Willoughby. And so there, the lowest bid that came in at was at 778,763. We had some estimates with McAdams that were higher than that originally, they were a little over a million. So we were very happy to see that they had come down, or they had, the, the actual bids were a little bit lower than that. That being said, our civil, you know, McAdams had recommended that we go with, with Cardinal Civil. They've done good work. We've talked with our inspector, and, you know, they, they just did great work with Rogers Road and Willoughby as well. And the good news is, too, we've, the board, of course, has approved and appropriated over 1.5 million for this project, and then looking at what we've spent already with the construction documents, and then adding in the construction costs, contingency, everything else, we're gonna be well under budget. Cardinal Civil has also said that they can go ahead, and they gave us a date of late August where they can begin construction, so it's, they could potentially start very soon.
That'll keep the cost down?
Yes. Because as we've discussed before, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be.
We have all the permits from Stormwater and all that they can start?
Yes, that was, was taken so long, is to get everything settled with DOT, DOT, and NCEQ and all of that, so everything, we're, we're ready.
Cool. Well, that's good, that's good news. I mean, I, I don't think we've had that good of news on a project estimate in a long time, so.
That's fair.
And it looks like there's a nice list of them. Usually, you don't give a one or two, so that's pretty good, too.
We had to get them out.
And Cardinal, they did Willoughby.
Yes.
And I think they've done other work in town, right?
Yes, they have Wallbrook. They have Wallbrook as well.
Say that again.
They have Wallbrook.
They have Wallbrook.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're happy with their work.
Yes. And they, when, when they finished, when they wrapped up the Willoughby project, they asked if we had any future work. We told them about it, and they said, great. The one thing about, the reason why they're able to give us a lower price is the mobilization is so low, because they already have people working on the area, and they already have places where they can store, or store the materials. And the crew that they, the crews that they bring from out of town, typically, they'll bring a crew from another area to work specifically on a project. They're already kind of acclimated to the area, so it just makes it a lot easier for them to take off. They were ready to give us a start date that's very close in the near future, because there are, any area already doing work, whereas some cases, they have to start three months, six months out, things of that nature. And it's also a similar project to Willoughby, in which is off the shoulder of the road, it's not a lot, in this case, they don't have to manage any traffic, really. And so it should be a very straightforward project for them, and it's largely earthwork, which is great. There's not a lot of utilities and such in the area. And so it's, these are the kind, this is the kind of project that contractors that are already doing work in an area look for to add in, so we're fortunate that they were able to be able to come in as a lowest bidder.
Eric, I got a question for you, sir. With us appropriating over 1.5, 5.0 million on this project, and it's coming in well under, what do you propose that we do with that money? Can we appropriate back into parks and rec under a different project, or with continuation of the farm?
Right, so since it's in the CIP, and it's associated with a project, the money will go and use and roll back into the general fund. This is me thinking about Amy, and so, but.
Thank you for that.
But since it is, since it is put into this fiscal year, then you will have to do a budget amendment to reassign or reincumber that money to go into a different place. And so it's both and, so it's no, you can't just move it, but yes, you can, as a board, do a budget amendment to reallocate those funds towards another CIP project, or we can use it as, to go towards, what's it called? Well, debt, I was trying to come up with a politically correct word, debt, to help fund other aspects of the farm project as we look toward activating. Again, this project only opens up the entrance, but they've been in talks with several different potential partners for things from basketball courts to facilities to pickleball courts and things of that nature, and so that just kind of helps, will help us to be able to find, and even soccer fields, us to be able to find funding to kind of come in and help as well. It'll also be beneficial to take that funding and say, and seek out grant opportunities, and that could be that amount of money that we can match with. And so if there's a five to one, if we have $250,000 to go towards it, which is much not even taking up the whole gap, then, you know, that times five, you know, 1.25 million dollars to be able to do, do work with. And so there are things we can do with the funding, so we're very fortunate that we prepared for, and it came in at a good price.
Thanks, sir.
Do you have any idea how long it's gonna take?
Be throughout the winter, probably be spring. We can get a better timeline from McAdams, but it's not gonna be a very long project. It should be, we're thinking about the spring, it should be done.
Because one of the key things that we, excuse, excuse my seating. One of the key things is that it's not as if it's gotta be a whole lot of asphalt except for up at the road. Everything else is gravel. It's like Eric said, this is pretty much earthwork. So it's not as if you have a dead time, except for that little asphalt up, up by the road. Everything else is just gravel.
Yes, sir.
Cool. Yeah, and remind me, I think it's two entries, it's a double entry, right?
There's gonna be two entrances, two ride-in, two ride-outs, and then the asphalt part is gonna be the improvements to Lewisburg Road, and then, you know, partially into the park, and then the rest of the road is gonna be the gravel. And there's gonna be a parking lot as well, gravel parking lot.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Is that your last slide?
Yes.
So I think you're looking for a decision on this, Eric?
Yes.
So what's the pleasure of the board on approving this, this bid?
So move?
Second.
And this was, this is a Cardinal bid?
Yeah.
The low bid, the Cardinal bid, is what the board is approving?
Looking at it as using the other 200, 200 contingency to put it at like the 1.2.
Okay, so I think we got a motion to approve the Cardinal bid, low bid, by Dan Austin?
Yes, sir.
And a second by Commissioner Paul. Was any other discussion? Not hearing any, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proving that, thank you, thank you, Eddie.
You're welcome.
It's very successful. Thank you, it's really good news. You brought us some really good news tonight, so like, thank you a lot for that, really do, good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thumbs up, sure. Thank you. One more item, now business we got to take care of, Kalis Farm, or Kalis Falls reimbursement agreement discussion, is that yours, Dave?
I think this one is mine, sir. Back in March of 2021, the town entered into a roadway reimbursement agreement with Mitchell Mill Investors LLC, who is the developer of the Kalis Falls project. That roadwork on Rollsville Road is to the point of getting done. The investor, in a reimbursement agreement, the private developer conducts all the construction work through private contractors and is obligated only to follow the normal public bidding procedures, but the town doesn't have any direct involvement. Once that work is completed, following the terms of the contract, the developer is entitled to reimbursement of the expenses that they incurred. This is a statutory provision that's also authorized in our town code, and the idea is that it leverages the private sector when work is already being done in an area to provide a public infrastructure improvement that might cost less than it would have cost if we had bid it out ourselves. In that regard, the March 2021 agreement is now in a position where for us to move forward, an amendment would be required. The agreement in 2021 capped the potential reimbursement to the developer at 697,039. However, the latest engineer's estimate derived from the lowest responsive bid would place the cost estimated to be at 883,686. It's about a 27% increase, probably not unexpected, given the time that has passed between the time of the contract estimate and now, which is essentially more than three years. Also, unlike the last matter you saw, seven bids did not come forward in this deal, and it had to be rebid multiple times, and interest was not great for that Rollsville Road project. So, in order to keep this matter moving forward, if the town would like to proceed with the reimbursement agreement, an amendment would be needed to reach the estimated cost, which is 883,686. However, the way the original agreement was structured, it was structured such that the estimate plus 25% for contingency was placed within the agreement, such that the town manager would be able to make a final determination based upon documentation as to whether the expenditure by the developer was reasonable, and that would be the amount to which they'd be credited. So if we were to follow that same plan, the amendment proposes that the new cap is 1,104,496.34, and we would hope that it'd be closer to the number I gave you before, but the manager would be able to handle that as part of an administrative item so long as it was in that window. What questions do you have for me? Because that, it's a long agreement, and that was super fast.
Did you have the amendment written out in here?
It is, it was delivered separately from the normal package as we were still waiting numbers.
So if I heard you right, we have two options.
Yes. You have the, well, you essentially have two options. The developer has indicated that the developer is not willing to do this construction that they're not obligated to do if they don't have a forecast that they would be reimbursed for it.
Certainly.
So, the practical reality is either we choose to amend, to provide the room to get this work done, or we determine that there are more important priorities for the town with its money, and we leave this project to another day.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, what actions have we taken at this point? We've acted dem property, right, to...
Correct.
To do this.
Yes, the right-of-way has been widened, yes.
So we've taken, over the last five years, it's been five years, I guess, or something close to three years, you said three years?
Over three years, yes.
You know, it's been a lot of actions been taking place, even condemning property, and I guess the only question that makes sense to me, board, is do we think we can do it cheaper later than we can do it now at this price? In other words, do you think if we don't, if we back out of this deal, we'll be able to do it later at some cheap cost, it's always be a gap there until we fill that gap, you know?
But we also get very fortunate on what we just saw previously with all those other bids, and the highest one being over 1.6 million, so at least if we stay in this range of 880, something, 3,000 all the way to 1.1 million, I think it's a safe for us, and we count for those type of...
And it's not going to get any cheaper.
So, and, and let me provide one more feature that I know the mayor will recall, but given that this predates you, this is not a reimbursement that is going to be made from the general fund or from a CIP budget, it is made from a sinking credit against the development fees that this development would otherwise be required to pay as part of their permitting process. So, in the event the project never came out of the ground, you would have a road and you would never have to pay for it. However, I don't think that that's likely, but you're not, you are not going to be required to raid the fund, the only source of funding to reimburse the developer on this are their own development fees.
Okay, understood. So we're not going out of pocket, it's credits that they would get, or that they would...
We had, we had long discussions three years ago that I remember about, is this out of pocket? Well, if, if you provide the credit, those impact fee funds are not going to be available the next time you go to look.
Correct.
So.
I'm with you.
Yeah, and those credits actually hits whenever the house is built or the property sold.
Correct, it's just, it'll be a credit to Amy again, she's coordinated with the planning department back in 2021 as to how they would administer showing that as a, as a ledger balance to allow them to draw down. Their predicted total development fees are in excess of 1.6 million dollars, so it covers it.
And that's the 3,200 per house and 2,400 per townhouse or something?
I believe that's correct, I don't know those numbers.
I think a little bit less.
Something like that. I think that's what it was.
Is that what he...
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome. So, really, I know, I know April was probably here when we first did this, but you guys may not have been here. But basically, basically, the vision the board, the board back then was they didn't want this gap between a good, you know, road and an old road, and you just come into a gap in there where you have to go into a two-lane and then go back into a, you know, a town road. And, and as attorney said, we put a lot of work, labor in and getting the property, be able to do that, put sidewalks, connect the sidewalks and all, so it's kind of...
Which is fully outside of what we're talking about right here, that was over the bottom.
Sole off-site.
Yep.
Correct, that's right. The Kalis Falls development, I've always thought of as a horseshoe, and so I'm just referring to the gap. So this is to complete the road from the two pieces that are required to be improved, and then connects those two pieces with the gap.
Yes, sir. So even if we're wishful thinking to expand Rollsville Road to four, four lanes, this would still be a necessary part of the, all of that?
Well, while I'm not sure as to how wide a right-of-way was actually acquired at that time, it certainly goes toward that effort, yes, yes, that's true.
So, it's not a wasted effort, no matter what.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? We entertain a consideration.
Okay, I move adoption of proposed first amendment to roadway reimbursement agreement and direct the same to be placed in final form by the town attorney and executed by the town manager.
No second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is that suitable, Dave, what you need, what you and Eric need?
Well, I wrote it for Dan, so I...
Okay. Sounds like it is.
It'll work.
I didn't see, I didn't hear a number in there, did it have a number in there?
The, the text of the amendment has all of the numbers in it, and it's in your package, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You got it. Anything else from that?
Sir.
Thank you, guys. The only items we've got is just some communication items, so town attorney, you got anything else you want to discuss?
Mr. Mayor, I would request that we go into closed session with regard to General Statute 143, 31811A3. The agenda does provide that we would also go into closed section, session for personnel matters, but I understand that that is not going to be a topic that the board takes up this evening, so it would just be attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Any other, you know...
That's all I have.
Report. Town manager?
I just wanted to mention a few things. As you mentioned earlier, the George Taylor ceremony, the unveiling of the marker is going to be postponed into early September due to the tropical storm, hopefully it won't become a hurricane, but tropical storm that's moving into the area, they're anticipating the rescheduled date to be the first or second week of September. As you all know, it's two events going on at the same time, be Friday night and Saturday. Friday is a closed event, but Saturday is the public unveiling of it. Thankfully, the marker has been received, we received it via FedEx Freight today, and so we inspected it for damage, and this is perfectly fine, and the preparations for the site at Main Street Park have been made, and so the concrete slab, so it's ready to be installed, and so all of the logistics on our part as a town have been taken care of, and so we're just continuing to work with Equal Justice Initiative and our liaisons of Wake County with the event, and just communicating with the public about it, and most importantly, educating the community about the significance of it, so that we can kind of move into this next phase historically. The other two, the other thing I want to remind everyone of is the Senior Expo, it's called the Golden Years Expo, and it's in honor of the National Senior Citizens Day tribute that's taking, taking place on August 21st, it's free, and it'll be here at the community center, and so please hop onto the website and get more information about that. The point of, the point of contact is Christina White and Parks and Recreation, and that number's 984-251-2422. And so, Ms. Christina, she is our program coordinator for our arts and culture, cultural programs, and so she's heading that up. The last thing is just wanted to let everyone know that please be safe when, as the weather kind of rolls in, they're anticipating between, it was eight to 10 inches of rain, but it's, the most recent update today says it's five to seven, there's something that we feel is a big difference between five to seven and eight to 10 inches, but we are anticipating some flooding in low-line areas. The fire department, police department, Public Works, we've all met to coordinate on response during the event, and also Wake County EOC will likely be activating, providing some support to us as well. Please give us an opportunity to clear off the greenways in the streets in the immediate time afterwards, we'll be out patrolling those things and looking it up. If you see anything, feel free to report it using the cognitif forms on our website or shooting myself an email, but just know that we're, we will be out working the event and also the time thereafter to get everything back up to a usable and safe way. We are expecting a lot of downed trees because of the gust, they're saying this wind should be averaged between 15, 25 miles per hour, but there may be some gusts in excess of 40 miles per hour. Since we've been receiving so much rain over the last few days, weeks, the ground's really soft and saturated, and so that's wind and saturated soil, it's a perfect mix for fallen trees, so please be cognizant of that. Be mindful, look out into your yards, if there's any tree that has no leaves on it right now, just keep an eye on it. Those are the likely candidates for branches that will be, fall off, propel, and may fall over, trees that have no leaves on it, that's typically a really good rule of thumb. So just take, take some time, be proactive, please, go ahead and get your bread, get your eggs, all those different things, please don't flood food line at the last minute, because Duke Energy did send out an email, said they are, and they do have upwards of 7,000 people mobilized within the area to help take on, manage the event, but they are expecting some outages due to tree limbs and things of that nature, so please, everyone prepare, be safe, turn around, do not drown, the water will be deeper than you think and will be moving faster than you think in those low-line areas. There were some flash flooding earlier this week in eastern Wake County and Garner, when they're, they're areas because of some rain, and so please, please, everyone just be safe. But that pretty much tops off all the information that I wanted to share with you all, and we just, thank you all.
Any quick update on the, on downtown road closure?
Yeah, so we've been working with, you mean about, Stormwater or just in general?
Just in general, about the road being closed.
It's still closed, so we'll be working to improve some of the pedestrian walkways, we met with some of the businesses downtown, we realized that some people have been not seeing it as clearly when it comes to walking around, so you see on social media some maps or designs that show this, walk this way, walk that way. We're still waiting on some signage, it's because there's a shortage on certain things, so we're kind, but we're coming up with ways to make signage. Myself and Michael met about that this week for the pedestrian paths from the parking lot, and also the local detour that continues to be confusing to some people, and so we're continuously improving those things and trying to do as much as we can with that. They are at a good place as far as some of the milestones they're trying to hit, we have been pivoting as a town and taking on some, working with DOT to make some things that were not initially going to be funded, to be reimbursed, or becoming reimbursable, and so taking some of the weight off of some of like cobblestone when it comes to the relocation of Century Link and utilities, so we'll be running some conduit, and DOT has agreed to reimburse us 80/20 on that, and so that, this kind of rolls into the normal reimbursement policy for that, they are moving, Spectrum has moved this, moved their utilities last week, they should be wrapping that up, Dominion came out, they have some conflicting lines with some cash basins that they are going back and re-editing, we're making progress on all the subsurface water and sewer utilities at the intersection, you all will see that some of the mass storms are up throughout, and we're continuing to, and you've also will notice that a lot of the sidewalk is being replaced, the flat work is being replaced, so as they're doing some of the subsurface repairs down at the main and young intersection, they're replacing a lot of the sidewalk that was pegged to be replaced down through the, through the corridor, particularly on the southeast side, the McDonald side, Hardy side of the road. You'll start seeing more work, working on the medians, well, side replacement on the other side, and then the medians in the coming months, but in general, the project is going well, it's still ahead of schedule, not ahead of schedule, still on time. The, the formal update on the project is something that we're working with, and so the delivery date for that formal update from Fred Smith was the 30th of last month. The project manager for Fred Smith, he is, he's, he's, he is armed reserves, and so he's been away for the last two weeks, so when he gets back, we'll convene and talk through the schedule, get any major updates, and see where things may be on or off or what have you with the project, so I'll bring a more formal update on you all about the timing, and some of the big milestones within the next three weeks. So it won't be in time for the work session, but we'll be in time for the business meeting of next month when we try to figure that out.
Thank you, sir. So, the way it stands, we're still planning on reopening the intersection September 15th?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just wanted, just wanted to confirm that, I heard you say, I want to confirm it, because as you know, we all get asked about it all the time.
Yes, and I'll, if anything changes...
And I know you do, too.
I will definitely let you know, but no red flags right now or anything to be concerned about.
Other than the storm?
Other than the storm. The hurricane season is going to be pretty intense, you know, it's been really, really dry of late, and so that typically rolls into an active hurricane season and an active winter season, in my experience, and so there's something that we just need to be thinking about. And so there's something that we need to be thinking about. That is a big deal. So we're trying to make as much progress with the project on the subsurface things to try to get the road quote, "closed up" as soon as possible. Because you know, every time the war, every time soil gets saturated, you have to remove it, put in more. Creates this ongoing cycle. But yes.
Any other thing? Any communications from the board? I'll close by saying, Eric, that was a great update on the road closure in the downtown there, a lot going on. And we've been meeting with the businesses. I saw the map that y'all made. That's a great map. And I will only encourage the board to help us out for the next six, eight weeks, six weeks probably, just when we close, to encourage people to go down for those businesses. It's a very nice parking lot down there. It's a very nice parking lot you can park in, go down there, got a good little circle. You can go to all the businesses you want to go to. But if y'all have social sites and all, let's promote, you know, that is a place to go. Go down there, check it out, check out the shops and stuff. And I'll try to promote those because, you know, there is no ride through traffic down there no more. You have to go down there for the purpose of going to the store. So, so it does hurt the businesses somewhat because you don't just drive by and stop. But just help us to do that. You would, you know, put it on your sites. It's a neat little map. I guess Michael made the map? Who made the map? Did you make it or?
It was, actually Candace made it.
Good. It's a nice, it's a nice little map.
We are very happy to have her. Lindsay did a great job, but that particular Photoshop creative skift, that was a big gap. And it really hindered us when it came to creating things in real time, us having to wait for things. Now things just kind of roll much faster.
Yeah. And it's on our website.
It's on our website.
It's on our Facebook site too, I think.
Yes.
So you can pull it off your Facebook site. I just think, you know, you guys got a lot of people following y'all too. So let's just promote them if we can.
Yeah, and if I could add, just to promote the businesses, I've gotten some really great, it's wedding season, I've got some really gifts, really good gifts from the shops for my friends who are getting married. And they've really enjoyed it, even if it's birthdays. I think everyone should give them all a chance. And also, this is one of the, I can't remember, but the ice cream, it's the only place you can get Hershey's ice cream as an ice cream shop in the area. So if y'all didn't know, this is really good. Yeah, it's a coffee lodge has Hershey's chocolate shakes. But, so Roseville is one of the only places where you can get Hershey's chocolate shakes, Hershey shakes, and Hershey's ice cream scoop, old school style. Yep.
Good question, Mr. Mayor.
Also, we got a new chili, hot dog chili place down north.
Got a new chili spot?
North Main Street is hard to get to. So you just have to go, be going down to North Main Street. But that's another good little shop. You need to go down and get you a hot dog during this closing.
The Cleveland Chili is excellent.
And we'll be out of the way at the main and young intersection before it gets too cold outside. So everybody go get chili, get the chili fix.
How you get?
I think we had some conversation about doing like a cash mob or something in favor of the downtown businesses. Is that in the works?
So Mike has been talking to them about a number of different ideas. You know, ultimately, we kind of leave it to them to decide, and then we support it and we promote it because we can't tell you all that you'll get a discount. It's somebody's business, as you know. But any ideas that they bring forth, we're definitely willing to support. And so as they continue to work with Michael, we'll bring those ideas to everyone, bring it to you all, and you'll see it on our social media.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Got you. Very good. Last thing I'll comment on, we do have the mayor show Thursday night. Two great guests. This is, this is focusing on the high school. The high school starts back in September with their programs and actually, actually starts back next week, week after next, I think, first football game. And so we'll have Coach Rayna Rackley on there from head football coach. I'm gonna have to talk to him about, you know, the high school OT has them the number one team in the state. I think that's, I hope that doesn't jinx them, so, but they are head of the Charlotte teams right now. Now naturally, Charlotte, if you look at the Charlotte websites, they don't have them number one. It's just, it's just the high school OT that has them number one. So we'll talk about that a little bit. And then Josh Hamilton, and Josh is the head coach of the track and field team, which won the state championship this past year in track and field by one point. One point. They weren't expected to win. A team that they beat had won it like two years straight, and they were really good, and they won by one point. So that's very exciting. So we had two teams this past year that won two championships, the women basketball and the women track and field. And so the women is showing the guys up right now. So I'm gonna talk to Rackley about that for sure. But if you, if you're available Thursday night, 7 o'clock, tune in. Be our first show on the sports things going on this, this year at, at high school. And I was, you know, challenge the board and also the citizen, everybody, go out there and see some of these, these athletes. You'd be surprised how good they are. Because really, I can, I think I read, there's like three wide receivers as D1, and the running back is D1, and a couple other defensive players, I think, D1. So these guys will be playing, you know, at Chapel Hill, South Carolina, and things like that. So maybe at University of North Carolina, I hope not, but.
Hey, hey, hey.
But, but these, these are athletes that play on Saturday on TV and stuff, that's playing out there at high school that you can go and watch for a few dollars, $7, $8, or whatever it is. Encourage you to do that. It's the best gig in town on Friday nights. So, so be sure to do that. So with that, any other comments from board? If not, without opposition, we're going to adjourn, or we're going to recess to, to closed session. And someone has that? Someone wants to make the motion to go into closed session? Okay?
A move that the board go into closed session to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss confidential personnel matter. Oh. To preserve the attorney-client privilege.
How you get it?
Sorry. Thank you.
So got a motion second, and we, we tabling the personnel matter until the other commissioners come back. So, so with that, I got a motion second. Any other discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we want to recess into closed session. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Appreciate that. Y'all hung in there. Thanks a lot. And we'll see.
So when's this storm supposed to come through here? I know it's raining, but...
Thursday, Fridays are nature.
Okay, we have just came out a closed session and got an update from attorney on a couple items. Really that wraps it up for the night. We had a good night, a couple of, couple land use issues to take care of. We did not do one thing that we had on agenda and that was a proclamation for recognizing Stella Seaworth. Stella's turned 100 years old this past week on August the 3rd, I think, was her birthday. And Mayor Pro Tim April Sneed was able to attend her celebration. And I had a proclamation, I think I'm gonna hold on to this and see if she can come to the next meeting. I was gonna give it to her personally. So other than that, I think we got all our business done for tonight. Remind everybody for the show Thursday night, anything from the board? Any last comments from board, town manager, attorney? All right, well appreciate everybody tuning in and we will see you in a couple weeks here at the same place. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.